Stop.
That's you.
I think if you keep it that way, it'll be better than this one. Oh, well, no, actually.
Hello?
Hi Nelson.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Not bad.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I found the right button.
Good.
Good evening. This is Tony.
How you doing?
Alrighty.
Hey Jonathan, how you doing?
All right, we were hooking up some new cables, so we just turned the internet back on, literally.
Good timing. Okay, it is seven o'clock. I'm Nelson Gage, I'm the chairman of the zoning board. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. So, again, I want to welcome everybody to the zoning board of appeals, January 19th, 2021 meeting. We have many items on the agenda. We'll try to get through them as efficiently as we can. I would like to start by having what we call an open forum, which is for any comments in regard to the function of the zoning board. And they need not be on items that are on the agenda. We'll have opportunities for the public hearing and time for comments made for the specific applications. But before I do that, one thing I would do like to offer is on Thursday, the 21st, the planning board is going to be holding a public hearing for the draft town comprehensive plan. And this plan is posted in draft on the town's website. So you can have an opportunity to, you know, via Zoom or however, to make comment about the comprehensive plan. There is also an opportunity to provide comment in writing until the 31st of this month. So for those that may be interested in that, I would recommend you take advantage of that. Again, it's more or less a kind of just a general statement and guide as how the town wishes to develop and progress. And it's definitely worth a look. And if there's something of interest that you feel like you wanted to provide a comment, you can do that either at the meeting on Thursday or in writing by the 31st. And I think on the town's website is an email address for Melissa who will be fielding those comments. So other than that, again, I'm going to open up the open forum for anybody who is here participating. And again, if they have a comment or so that they would like to contribute regarding the zoning board, again, how we conduct our business, you're free to do so. And we'll just give that a minute or two to see if anybody does wish to contribute. Okay, not hearing much in the way of response. I'm going to go ahead and close the open forum at this time. And believe we can proceed with our applications. I'm basically going to go in order of those items listed on the agenda. And the first item would be Larry Pullen. You're with us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you would like to just quickly give us a rundown of what you were looking to do.
Well, I need a variance for my garage that I want to put up because I wanted from the border, the side border, I think it's 40 feet. And I'm, I was actually looking for 20 feet, but they have a line there that says 18 feet. That would probably be good enough, but I was looking for 19 to 20 would probably be better. And the reason being I want to put the garage there is because I talked to my neighbor who's runs Home Magic. He's the owner of Home Magic. And he thought that that would, the property would look better with the garage placed there. I was going to place it like alongside the driveway, but he said that wouldn't look very good from the road. So that's why I decided to put the garage where I decided to put it.
Okay. So at this point, and this is a 28 by 36 foot detached garage?
Uh huh, yes.
Okay. And so at this point, it's going to be 21 feet from the east side property line.
Yeah, it probably, yeah, the east side, yes, that is east, yes.
Okay.
20 feet, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe it's 40 is the code.
That's correct. Yeah. Okay, so again, if, would you want to go with a 20 foot, basically?
20 foot is fine.
Okay, so it'd be 20 feet from, again, the east side property line. And then you would just need a 20 foot variance.
Yes.
Okay. Fellow board members, any questions?
No.
So we did set again a public hearing, Larry, for this application. So I'm going to make a motion that we open the public hearing regarding your quest, your request for a 20 foot east side yard variance. So, board members, I need some affirmation with this.
Oh, yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Nelson?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, so at this point, the public hearing is now open for this matter regarding the variance request. And I guess what we'll do, we'll give a couple of minutes to see if anybody's interested in weighing in. Yeah, see, that's what I like to do. All right. All right, I guess I'll make a motion not hearing any comments regarding the public hearing that we closed the public hearing for this matter.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Nelson?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay. And so the next part of the procedure, we're going to go over the factors to be considered regarding this application.
Wait, before we do that, Nelson, did we take care of the Seeker stuff last month? I'm just seeing it in the, in the.
Well, he wasn't here last time. Well, okay, so that's a good point. So if you want to make a motion.
All right, I will move to declare ourselves lead agency under Seeker.
Okay.
I'll second. John?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
So then I will take it one step further and make a motion that the ZBA hereby determines that the request for an individual setback lot line variance is a type two action pursuant to Title VI NYC, our section 671.5C 12 or 13, and that no further action pursuant to Seeker is required.
It will second that.
Nelson?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Matt? Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, so in lieu of that, then, or in addition to that, I want to start reading and we'll go over the factors considered regarding this application. The first being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detrimental nearby properties. Board members, I just need.
I don't think so.
Okay. If, I hope that be the general consensus. Okay, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. A no. Whether the requested variance is substantial.
As long as it's 20 foot or less, it meets our general rule.
Okay, so it's not substantial then?
True.
Okay. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
Okay, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
No more than normal.
So it would be qualified as a yes because of the choice of the placement? Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we grant Larry Pullen of 625 Oak Hill Road, Esperance, New York, 12066, SBL 74.00-1-30, a, an east side yard variance of 20 feet to construct a 36 by 28, one-story detached garage.
Nelson?
Nelson?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Dan? Matt? Link?
Hi.
Okay. Approved.
Okay, and I did forget there's a little end of this providing subsection 14.5.2B, providing a building permit be obtained with six, within six months, and all other aspects of the ordinance be followed. So, so Larry, you're all set?
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, bye now.
This is out of the way. Okay, the next item is the Icing Yocler application. And I believe Joanne Crum, you were representing?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay.
So this is an attempt, this is a resolution without litigation to a boundary problems that were caused by an erroneous survey back in, I think about, I can't remember when Frank Rapant did a survey of the Issing property. And he showed that there's a garage, if you take a look at this south, on the north side of the, of the road at the southeast corner of Issing, there's a garage that I show the line going, the dotted line going through.
The one that says carport?
No, no, further on the north side of that driveway of the, of the lane.
Right, gotcha.
So Frank Rapant had done a survey, and I can't remember whether it was in the year 2000 or in the 90s. And he had the entire lot bigger to the left so that that entire garage was on the lot that Issing had. Since then, we have done a ser, we've done survey work, determined that in fact the line went through the Issing garage, the Yocler's line. And so he was getting ready to institute an action to quiet title because when the garage was built, they had a survey that showed that the garage was on his lot. He and Yocler have been able to come to terms to have Yocler sell Issing that, the portion that the garage is on. And then if you see it's, I think it's .2 acres. And then Yocler is, Issing is conveying that little tiny parcel, triangular parcel of, of lake frontage to Yocler. So, so essentially, the line is on the north side of the road, the line is where people kind of thought it was. That's going to be memorialized. On the south side, everybody knew it was closer to the carport, but Yocler has consented to sell Issing a portion of that property as we have it staked out. So Yocler's house is, is between the two buildings there, you cannot meet the side yard setbacks between the two existing buildings, the house, which is fairly new, but the garage has been on the, on the Issing property for 20 years or more. And the garage on the south side of the South Shore Road is new of Yoclers, but that does meet the side yard setback. So, so this is really a resolution that saves everybody probably $30,000 in legal fees.
Okay. And this was.
Side yard setbacks, there, there simply is no way to meet side yard setbacks at all.
Okay. And this was based on a mutual lot line agreement?
Yes.
Okay. So given that, I guess we determine that the Icing property would need a 33-foot, four-inch east side yard variance. And then the Yocler property would need a 16-foot west side yard variance.
Yes.
Okay.
That's not me.
Sorry, that's me.
Okay.
Sorry.
Usually it's my dog barking.
Sorry.
Don't get that started because all our dogs will start barking.
Mine barked all through the last meeting.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah.
Um, so board members, is this makes sense? I know we'd gone over this in the previous meeting.
Right.
Yes. Okay. So given that, at this point, if somebody wants to make a motion to open the public hearing in regard to this matter.
Can this be combined into one hearing or do we need two?
Um, well, I kind of wrote it up as two. Well, maybe we can do the public hearing for both matters, even though it's going to result in.
Two different motions.
That's right. Yeah.
All right, I will move that we open the hearings for both the Yocler and Issing variances, variances, Issing's east side side yard variance and Yocler's west side side yard variance. Second.
John?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, we'll give a minute or two to see if we have anybody that's interested in weighing in.
Yes, can you hear me?
I, yes.
Okay, this is Tom Issing. I'm, I'm the Issing in this thing. And just as a little background. And just as a little background, let me just say that we bought this property a little over five years ago. The garage was already there. We didn't do this ahead of time, and we did have a survey, as Joanne says, from the seller. And as far as we know, everything was okay. And it wasn't until Yocler bought the property, I don't know, two years ago, two and a half years ago, I can't remember exactly. And then wanted to build, then then he started looking at property lines, and it all became well, somewhat confusing. And we hired Joanne Darcy Crum to do the survey, and then this is how it came out. So that's kind of the background to it. This, we bought the property given a survey that was erroneous, so.
Okay, but my understanding that is that you and the, I guess, the Yocler Family Trust have come to that lot line agreement? And you're both satisfied with the new boundary line adjustment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that's good. I mean, because it does sound like it's satisfactory to both parties, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comment regarding this matter? Again, this is part of the public hearing. Okay, again, at this point, I think we're not going to get any other comments. So I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing regarding this matter.
I'll second. Nelson?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay.
I will move that we declare that we declare ourselves lead agent for both of these matters.
Actually, we did do that. I'm just looking. The only reason that we missed with the previous application because he had not appeared in the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But I did check to make sure. So given that, again, we're going to address each variance application. So I'll start with Thomas Isings. And we're going to just go over the factors considered. Again, the first being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No. No, it already exists.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance?
Nope. No, buildings already exist.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
Yes.
It is, but again, you're extenuating circumstances, so. Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
No, it is the conditions of the neighborhood.
Yes. Were the alleged difficulty was self-created?
No. No.
No, it was not, right, because
Once.
No. Okay. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to, I'll make a motion, again, this is regarding the Icing property. I make a motion to grant Thomas and Janet Ising of 722 South Shore Road, Delancey, New York 12053, an east side setback variance of 33 feet, 4 inches to comply with the terms of a lot line agreement that resulted in a boundary line adjustment.
I'll second.
Nelson?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Matt? Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay. And the next. So then, as far as the findings, I guess we could agree that the same conditions would also apply to the Yocler family property?
Yes.
Okay. So then, as a result, I'm going to make a motion that we grant the Yocler Family Trust at 712 South Shore Road, Delancey, New York 12053, SBL 35.09-2-12, a west side yard setback variance of 16 feet. And again, this would be to comply with the terms of a lot line agreement that resulted in a boundary line adjustment.
I'll second.
Nelson?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, so Joanne, I believe you're all set then?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your help on this.
Not a problem.
We should be able to do the recording sometime later.
If I could just pop in here, I thank you, but on the, on another matter, the Dennis Weekly. I don't think anything's being done right now, but he is on our agenda to do a survey. And so, but we have not gotten there yet.
Okay.
So that's just to kind of keep you in the loop.
Okay, well, I, what research we asked that we opted not to put him on the public hearing agenda just because we wanted to do some research regarding you know, the lots where he's at. And the best I could see is that those lots were created to those size, you know, way back, so it's not
Yes, they were.
Right, so our basically addressing, you know, his request would not be something say that we would feel be out of the ordinary.
Okay, well, so does he need a survey?
I'm not thinking so from our end.
I, to be honest with you, I didn't think he did when they first, when he first came. I'm not adverse to to working with him, and if he, if he doesn't want to serve, maybe he still wants to survey anyway, but I'll, I'll touch base with him on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Thank you. Okay, have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is Michael Delavilla. Are you with us?
I am, yes. Can you hear me?
I can. You're, you're with us via phone?
No, I'm on video.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No worries.
Okay. So again, now this is you were requesting a side yard variance for with the intent of constructing a garage?
Correct, yes, of one-floor, two-car garage, 20, 24, I'm sorry, 20 foot by 24 foot.
Okay. And I think that you were willing to move the garage a little bit closer to the house. So the actual variance request would be just the 20 feet?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and I see you did provide us with a deed. I think we requested that.
Correct.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
No. None here.
Okay. So if somebody could make a motion to open up the public hearing in regard to this application?
I'll motion that we open the public hearing in regard to the application of Michael Delavilla, SBL 53.00-3-20.15.
I'll second. Dan?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Nelson?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, well, we'll just give a minute or two to see if there are any public comments to be made on this application.
Stanley just goes all the way.
All right, I guess at this point, there aren't going to be any comments. So I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing in regard to this matter.
I'll second. Or whoever else. Nelson?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay. So at this point, I want to run through the factors to be considered. The first being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties?
Nelson, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
If we're moving it four feet or three feet, where on this map is it being moved?
I, I would go ahead, Michael.
Is it moving it closer to the, there's like the driveway between the, the house, the existing garage?
Oh, so there's a full, there's three feet in there that you can move.
There's, I think about 10 or 12 in there, yeah. Yeah, this isn't drawn to scale, I don't know.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
So again, the first factor being with an undesirable change being produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
No. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance?
No.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
Well, we changed it to 20.
That's, yeah, so it's not would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
Okay. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, so I'll go. So I'm going to make a motion that we grant Michael Delavilla of 565 Knight Road, Delancey, New York 12053, SBL number 53.00-3-20.15, a north side yard setback variance of 20 feet to construct a 20 by 24-foot one-story detached garage for finding subsection 14.5.2b, providing a building permit be obtained within six months and all other aspects of the ordinance be followed.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Nelson?
Hi.
Diane?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Link?
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, sir, you're all set?
Thank you all very much.
Okay, great.
Have a good evening.
Yep, you too. Okay, the next application, Kevin Novak, are you with us?
Yes, good evening.
And you're connecting via the phone?
Yes, I am. I'm, I don't have access to to be able to join via Zoom, so yeah, I'm just on my mobile phone.
That's fine, we can hear you loud and clear. I just don't want to try to look for you and not not be able to see you.
Yeah.
So okay, now this is where you were looking to basically construct a barn which hasn't obviously been built yet. But you wanted to have it such that it would not impact too much in a field. And that you were looking to basically at least have the footprint of it within 20 feet of the side yard line?
That's right, yeah, it's, yep, it's currently a vacant property. And I'd like to build a pole barn and that's right, I'm requesting a 20, 20-yard southern, so it's the southern side yard setback from the side yard, the 40-foot per code.
Right.
Yep, yeah, and it's, it's for a number of reasons, really, to kind of minimize impacts on that the agricultural use of that field. Maximize the distance away, the separation from the existing cemetery area as well as the adjacent neighbors' existing house.
Okay.
To, to the north.
So, and now this is the property that's on the the north side of of Miller?
Yeah, so Miller Corners Road generally runs north-south, so it's, actually, it's on the east side of Miller Corners Road.
Okay, got you.
Yeah, so the the the, the side yard that I'm looking to get, you know, go from a, from the, the 40-foot setback to 20 feet is on the south side.
Okay. Well, if I'm looking at a map and okay, that's see. So Miller's Corners Road basically runs north-south?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay. So that side yard lot line is to the south then?
Correct.
Okay, correct. Yep.
I guess we, I think we'd asked that. Did you have any information on that little cemetery site that?
I, yeah, I did, I. Yeah, based on, after the last meeting. I provided a sketch, which is really kind of a zoom, zoom in. Of the existing. Subdivision map. That kind of shows it a little, a little bit easier to reach scale. And, and measured the distance. Between. The existing cemetery and the proposed barn.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's pretty close to a hundred and eighty-five feet. So I basically put some stakes out where I'd like to locate the barn. That met, met the existing side yard and front, and the eighty-foot front yard setback. And it was, it was a hundred and eighty-five feet to the existing cemetery. So with, with the twenty-foot. Variance on the side yard. It would, it would go to two hundred and five feet.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I did drive by, of course, it's kind of covered by snow right now. But it looks to be a considerable distance from your proposed barn.
Yes.
Okay. Did you have dimensions in mind of the barn?
Yeah, I'm thinking a maximum would be thirty foot by forty foot. If anything, I might go a little bit smaller than that, but that would, that would be the maximum. Thirty, thirty, thirty feet by forty feet.
Gotcha. And this would be more than one story, say?
No, it would, it would probably just be a single story with. You know, maybe some storage trusses in, in the, some storage, you know, in the roof trusses. But it was, it would essentially be a one-story, you know, agricultural use type of a barn.
Okay, I got you.
You know, I'm thinking of a, you know, it would be a, you know, standard pole barn construction probably with. You know. Brown metal siding and roofing.
Okay, yeah.
Something that kind of would kind of just blend, blend away.
Okay. Now, do you current, you own this property or?
Yes, I do.
Okay, was this like a more recent purchase?
No, actually, we've owned the, owned the property for quite some time. It was a recent subdivision, though. So we, we had, so this, this property, this vacant property is forty-five and change acres.
Okay.
And there was, there was. A fit, a roughly fifty acre parcel on the. On the west side, the other side of Miller Corners Road. So we, we recently went through a subdivision process. Essentially, you know, subdividing. The acreage roughly in half. Along Miller Corners Road.
Okay, and the reason I.
Yep.
The, the reason I ask because the SBL number is at thirty-three point zero zero. Dash one dash six point one three for this property?
That is, that's the SBL number prior, I believe, prior to the subdivision. So with, with, with the recorded subdivision. This property. Is now six point one one one.
That makes sense, okay. Yeah, because I didn't see, you know, I looked, looked it up on the tax map. And again, I didn't see the six point one three, but I did see the six point one one.
Does the, the address stay the same as six nine nine Miller's Corners? Is if you Google that, it goes up on the west side of the road.
Yeah, that's right. So we, we also own six ninety-nine Miller Corners Road. So that, that's where we currently live on the west side. So we own, we own that, and then we own this newly created lot on the east side. But it, but we subdivided it, so we'll have, right, well, there'll be, there, there are two separate tax parcels and. We'll, we'll have two, two separate tax bills and, and the like.
Okay.
But since there's not a residence on there, I don't, right, you don't, my understanding is. You don't get assigned a street number. A nine-one-one street number, right, and an, an address.
No.
Until you, until you build a house, right?
Yeah, yeah. And again, I was just concerned about the, the SBL number is the one that we would want to have to be more precise.
Right. So if, yep, and if you look at the subdivision map. That shows, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the correct SBL. Post subdivision, right, which is the six point one one one.
Okay, yeah.
So it's, it's that lot. That I'm requesting the, that, the side yard variance on.
Got you, okay. All right.
Yeah, and it, we, we. The, the subdivision was recorded at the county fairly recently. So, and I know that the, the Schenectady County Clerk's Office. I think they're running, you know, given, given COVID and the pandemic, I think they're. They're a few months behind.
That, yeah, I, I kind of assumed that.
Yeah, that might be why if you're, if you search on it now, it might, that the, the subdivision recording may not. Be showing up yet.
That, okay, that's fine, but as long as in our. Variance information, then we'll make reference to the six point one one one, six point one one one, yes. All right. Board members, any other questions? So then we would need a motion to open the public hearing regarding this application?
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for SBL three point zero zero. Dash one dash six point one one one. For Kevin Novak.
I'll second.
Nelson.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, so the public hearing is open, we'll give a minute or two to see if anybody is interested in weighing in.
Hi. My name's Mark Weinheimer, I live at six oh one Miller's Corners Road.
Okay.
You know, I'm Kevin's next door neighbor. On opposite side of the street, actually, I'm on the, the west side. I am mildly concerned about the cemetery. You know, it's, was a family cemetery for the Chapman families that lived on these farms here. I would like. To make sure it continues to be protected. But other than that, I have no objection to the setback there.
Okay.
The cemetery is listed in Foot Cemetery Census of Duane'sburg.
Okay, that's good to know.
And what is it listed as?
The Chapman Cemetery.
Are there any Chapman family members? Still around that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And I've been researching the family for some time, so.
Okay. Yeah, but, I mean, that's a valid point, and again, we, we did know.
But it is a, it is an important historic resource for the town, that cemetery.
Okay, good. All right, if there are no other comments. I'm going to make a motion that we close the public hearing in regard to this matter.
I'll second.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is run through the factors to be considered. The first being again, whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
No, and I would also note that. Granting this variance would actually move it farther away from the cemetery than not granting the variance.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's really one of the driving reasons for the variance.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to variance?
That clear?
I'm going to say yes.
And reason?
You know, I'll take that back, I'll say no, because it would not, the benefits that he wishes to. To get would not be achieved by feasible alternative.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's where I, the term feasible, you know, there has to be an element of practicality. In it too, obviously, you know, you do have lots of property, but it doesn't make sense to have a barn. That, you know, is kind of.
Right.
Not practically accessible for what you're intending to use it for, so. Whether the requested variance is substantial?
No.
Yeah.
Not by our standard.
Would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yeah.
No, yes?
Well, yeah, yes, and they, they all are, because she doesn't have to build anything theoretically.
Right, but I. Okay, so.
More so than usual.
Right, right, that's a good way to phrase that as well. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and. Let me see.
All right, I, I will move that we grant Kevin Novak of six ninety-nine Miller Corners Road. A twenty-foot. South side variance for his lot at thirty-three point zero zero dash ones. Dash six point one 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 for the construction of a thirty by forty. Pole barn type structure under section fourteen point two point two B. Provided he gets a. Building permit within six months.
And I'll second that, but I would do just like to add among the conditions being that. The integrity of that existing cemetery be maintained. Kevin, you're still with us?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Okay, I.
Yeah.
You would be in agreement with that?
Yeah, absolutely, I, you know, I'll just acknowledge Mark, Mark's comment that. Yeah, it, the cemetery I also view as a, you know, it's a valuable historical resource for the town and. Absolutely have no intention of, of disturbing it.
Okay, so again, with that mention, I'll, I'll second Jonathan's motion. Melissa, we can't hear you.
Got it, yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, John.
Nelson.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Okay, Kevin, you're all set?
Great, thank, thank you very much. If, if I could ask one question. And maybe I, my apologies, maybe I should have asked before you, you went around with the vote. There's a, so it's, I, I. I heard, if I heard correctly, I think there's a, the variance is essentially. There's a condition there that I would need to apply for a building permit within six months. Is there any way that that time period could be extended? In case, I mean, just to give me a little more time. To build?
I believe so, right? Something could be worked out with Dale regarding the. I mean, the, the variance has been approved, yeah, and you could, you know, to obtain, obtain the building permit. You could, you know, just work something out with Dale, I'm sure that's, should not be a problem.
Okay, so that, that wouldn't tie, you know, tie Dale's hands in terms of his ability to give me a building permit, say. You know, if I went beyond six months before I pursued that?
Well, I would probably see, see him sooner than later, just indicating what, you know, your concerns are. And then I'm sure, again, something could be, you know, worked out with him.
If you apply within six months, you don't then necessarily have to build immediately, once you have the permit.
Okay.
Yeah, he may be able to give it an extension on the. On the length, the permit is valid.
Yeah, I, actually, I think the permits, you, you can, even if you get it sooner than later. Before you're actually starting to build, you can extend the permit in itself. But again, you would do well to talk to Dale and just work out whatever arrangements you can with him.
Okay, that sounds great, as long as there's there's kind of a, it sounds like there's a mechanism there for.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, and.
We just also note that this doesn't pertain to this particular property, but the Chapman Farmhouse, which is nearby, is on the National Register of Historic Places.
Okay. Which is what, part of the same family then?
Yes.
Okay.
It would have all been one farm at one point.
Actually, it was, it was owned by two brothers, so that's how the farm got divided originally.
Mr. Weinheimer, I see you have a website.
Huh?
You have a website?
No.
No, that must be somebody.
All right, so Kevin, you're good to go then.
Okay, thanks again. I appreciate it.
Okay, and thank you, Mark, for your input. Again, that was something that we had taken into consideration, but it's good to have, you know, more information, so.
I'm glad to have been a part of it. It's important to me that that you folks inserted the extra language in the in the in the description there.
Yeah, it's a consideration that is, you know, has merit, so. All right. Let me see. Okay. Anthony Canastraki, are you with us? We need, we can't hear you. Okay, there you go.
How about now?
Wonderful.
Oh, that's better.
Okay.
I think I told you last time, this is too many buttons for me. Okay, so. You need me to review?
Yes. Let me just make sure I've got.
Yeah, you had that little sketch.
Right in front of me, okay.
Yeah, there you go. So I guess what I'd like to do briefly is take down three dilapidated ugly-looking structures, if you will, and replace them with a new home and a new garage. And I'm asking for a variance in the front of 20 feet, which will place the new garage right where the old one is. And on the side, which I believe that's the north side, the structure is currently at 10 feet. So by moving the house up, if you will, and give the town the 40 feet from the water, I can keep that 10-foot sideline and still give me enough room to do what I need to do. So I guess on the side, I'm asking for approximately 26, and I have feet variance and a 20-foot variance from the front by the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the only thing
Yep.
I came across in your application, you submitted a a page out of the zoning ordinance where for, which included a reduced lot provision. Are you connected to SOWR?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, which indicates that, okay, that minimum lot sizes can be smaller than what is normally required. But it also says a minimum side setback of 20 feet. Throwing this out to my other board members, because I don't think we took that into account. The problem is.
So it's really a 10-foot variance I'm asking on the side, then?
It could be. The only thing is, when I looked in the zoning ordinance, so ordinance, I didn't, unless I have the older page. Board members, if you have a town ordinance, if you could look on, again, it's section seven, Lake District L1, Duane and Mariva Lakes.
Minimum setback?
Yeah. See, I mean, I have page 24.
Nelson, I do have, I did have a page that I was given some time ago, where, yes, the setbacks required were 20 feet, not 40 feet. And actually, that was part of the reason why I bought the property. Because I could work with that. And because the buildings are where they are where they are. So I can still move, you know, the house away from the lake, if you will, to give the 40 feet. And on the side, I need to stay, I guess, where I am now, because I can't really go too much, I cannot go to the right, because I got a stream which comes into the side on my property, or I smack in the center. So I'm not, yeah.
The only thing, so how long ago had you been given this page from the zoning ordinance?
See, I bought about 10 years. That was probably 10 years. Because I got all that when I was inquiring into it.
So Jonathan, what, again, when I looked at the, again, this, my zoning ordinance is from 2015.
Is this 7.1.6, Nelson?
It's seven, well, it's section seven, and it lists both Duane and Mariva Lakes, Lake District L1. But the zoning ordinance, the more current one, is basically listed two lake districts separately.
Yes, I have Mariva Lake on pages 24 and 25.
Right, as do I. But if you look, if you have the application materials that the the page that was submitted under section seven, Lake District L1, and it, again, parentheses has Duane and Mariva Lakes, there's 7.6, which is a reduced lot provision. Which does, again, give you the minimum side setback as being 20 feet. But I don't know if, you know.
Well, mine's, the booklet that I have is 40 feet.
Right. So again, I guess what we would be looking at is what we came up with last time, where we prorated, because it's a narrower lot than what is normally prescribed. So we had the option of prorating the the side setbacks based on the narrower lot. So then it came down that the requirement would be just a 36 and a half foot requirement. And you wanted to have a 10 from the side yard, so then you would need a 26-foot side yard variance.
Correct.
Okay. But I'm curious, again, where this other page came from, whether maybe it was from a previous zoning ordinance? Is anybody else seeing what I'm looking at? Jonathan, we can't hear you. You may be muted.
Yeah, I see what you're you're alluding to. I'm suspecting that's the pre-2015 ordinance, and it was superseded by the booklet we have.
Okay, so again, we can just proceed again, with the variance, you know, as we determined from last meeting, that it would be, again, a 26 and a half foot variance based on the prorated 36 and a half foot requirement. So. We'll have to do some homework on the other. Like I say, I just hadn't realized that until I looked at it a little closer. But I'm pretty sure even the the current zoning ordinance that, you know, is on the town website is the 2015 that we have. So. But so in any event.
Well, that's why I can ask for the 26.5. I have no problems.
Right, as long as you're comfortable for, I mean.
Keep everything up to date, sure. I'm easy to get along with.
Okay.
I want to keep that, you know, that side, because the building is already there, but I'm going to just take it down and replace it with something attractive, if you will, and beautify the corner, because it's really a nice all right now.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right, so given that, just to refresh our information, then again, we'd be looking for a 20-foot front yard setback and a 26 and a half foot side yard setback.
That's correct.
Okay. So given that if somebody would make a motion that we open the public hearing for this particular matter?
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for SBL dot 1 352 South Shore Road.
And I'll second.
Dan.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Okay, the public hearing is now open, so we'll give a couple of minutes to let anybody who's interested interested in weighing in on this matter. Sir, are you currently living on the property now?
No, no, it's not livable, Nelson, no.
Okay.
No. I live in Ever Park.
Right, okay, that's.
Currently, yeah. But I'll hope to be in your neighborhood soon.
Good.
I figure you guys can use more taxes, right?
Can hurt. And so would your intent to be to live there year-round?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We'll give it just a couple more seconds here. Okay, if somebody wants to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Anthony Canastraci, SBL number 35.10-1-17.1 352 South Shore Road.
A second.
Diane.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, so. What I like to do is run through the factors to be considered. The first being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance?
No.
Whether the requested variance is substantial?
Yes.
Yes.
It is, but I would like to note that it is no more substantial than, you know.
Than the pre-existing.
Than the pre-existing, so. Just make that note. Would the variance have been, have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
As always.
Yeah.
All right. Let me just. Let me see. Side. So basically, you're going to raise everything to the ground and then start anew?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So let me just get this one. So the lake. So the side yard variance is to the east then, correct?
I would think it's.
Thinking it might be west. You're on the south side of the road?
I think it's northwest. So if you're on South Shore Road, going from Mariva Road and to South Shore, it's on the beginning of my property.
Right, okay.
I think, I think that's north, isn't it? South Shore Road goes north to south?
It's more east to west.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking it's east, because if you're, the lake itself is north of that property itself, correct?
Okay, if that's the case, then it is west, I mean, east.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
In other words, yeah, the property is just before the river on the side. So if I'm, before I get to the river, going towards the river, is that south? Or is that west?
Well, if you're on the the south shore of the of the lake itself, again, and your house is facing north to the the lake. Again, and your house is facing north to the the lake.
Correct.
So that's why I'm thinking if you're in your house.
The lake, it's the one on my right.
Right, that's correct, and for most for all intensive purposes, that would be to the east.
East, okay. Make a note of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, the stream is on your on your west and the lake is to the north, the road is to the south and the setback is to the east.
East.
The papers kind of up, the drawings upside down.
Yeah, okay.
But if you go to the page before it in the packet.
I guess I never made this on astronomer.
And then it it orients better.
So the lake is north is what you're telling me, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
The lake. Okay.
Yes.
All right.
On your map.
Little education there.
Yeah, your map is sort of upside down.
Yeah, on your map, west is north.
I guess I can't charge my wife for the map then if it's wrong.
West is north.
All right, thank you guys for that.
Okay, so if we're all comfortable with what we're looking at, I'm going to go ahead and. That we grant. Anthony Canastraci of your current address is forty four Drumlow Road, Ever Park, New York. One two zero one eight.
That's correct.
Okay, and this would be for a property on three fifty two South Shore Road. In Delancey, New York, one two zero five three. SBL number three five point one zero dash one dash seventeen point one. A. Yard variance of twenty feet. And a east side yard variance. Of twenty six point five feet to construct, it looks like a fifty three by sixty five foot. One story, single family dwelling.
All right.
Per the findings of section fourteen point five point two B, providing a building permit be obtained within six months and all other aspects of the ordinance be followed.
Very good.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Nelson.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, so sir, you're all set. You'll want to see Dale. Basically, to get the building permit aspect, I guess.
All right.
Okay.
All right, will I get something in the mail or do I need anything? I don't know.
No, it'll be recorded at the town hall.
Beautiful. Okay, I'm going to the next step, then I'll see Dale.
Yes, okay.
Thank you very much. You all have a good evening and a happy new year.
Yeah, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to it.
Good.
Have a good night.
Good night. Dennis Weekly, are you with us?
Yes.
Great, thank you for being patient. So my understanding is that. You have a property. That basically were two smaller lots and then were subsequently combined into one lot. And then now you're looking to separate those lots again.
Yes.
Okay. And I I know we had you. You know, kind of hauled off with the public hearing until we were able to do a little research and again, I. What I was able to find out that those lots were actually preexisting of those smaller sizes. You know, such that now I guess the requirement is for the like a forty three thousand five hundred and sixty feet, which is about an acre. You know, whatever zoning ordinance was in effect at the time, those lots were created considerably smaller.
I I thought the research we were doing was to try to find out whether the lots were originally combined to allow to. The buildings that were then built. I mean, there was some question about whether they were originally combined for the purpose of building. And now now that they were built, admittedly, a new owner is seeking to split them apart again.
Well, it's it's. But it's not really a new owner, correct?
Well, he inherited it, right? As I recall, you inherited from your parents. Yes. Or you and your brother inherited it and you were trying to split it so that you got the house and he got the garage or vice versa. Exactly. Yeah.
So again, what what I had done is I'd gone and looked at, you know, the tax map and did some other research and again, those lots had been created. Of those smaller sizes, there are other lots. Especially the ones on the northern side were again. The sixty by one fifties. Again, that that's a fairly small lot, but again, it is what it is. And again, this, we were concerned about. You know, that one ordinance that makes reference to not creating, you know, lots smaller than their. There are. That we can't, we shouldn't be creating smaller lots. I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but the concern is that these lots were already. Small lots, they were they're like preexisting undersized lots. It's not like we're taking, you know, a larger parcel of property and creating. You know, you know, kind of even arbitrarily smaller lots.
Right, there are, and they're also separated by a road.
They are, yeah.
So these aren't really adjacent properties.
No, they're not.
I I just thought our fear was we allowed one owner to combine them in order to build. And now we're allowing a subsequent owner to sub to to divide them again now that it is built.
Yeah, yeah, although the it has been a significant amount of time since that happened.
Right.
And the the boundaries of the lots in terms of. Their adjacent properties won't change a bit.
Right.
Correct, yeah. So. Again, but. You know, our initial concern was that they. It's a fairly, you know, sizable area variance request. And again, that's what initially, you know, we were hesitant until we felt like, you know, how can we, you know. Even justify this. But again, to in my, you know, research, I felt that there was. A preexisting condition that, you know, exists not only previously with these two lots, but also with other lots that are still. In that neck of the woods. So. Any other, Matt, does this make sense to you, what we're looking at doing?
Yes.
Okay. So. Along those lines. Is the is this something that we feel as a board that we could do and justify doing?
I think given the the, I would have greater concerns if they were right next to each other, but given this. The physical situation and the adjacent lots. I I think it's perfectly fine.
Okay. All right, so. So if I'm correct with this. That the property on the north side, and Dennis, this is kind of back to you, is the property that has the garage on it?
On the north side, right?
Okay, and that's the. The sixty by one fifty lot size.
Right.
Okay, and then the house or the the south side lot, which is the fifty eight by two hundred, is the one that has the house on it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then, again, if the minimum lot size. Be forty three thousand five hundred and sixty feet. None none of these are connected to sewer or or anything, are correct?
The house is connected to the sewer, yeah.
That to the town sewer?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me just do a quick look, and this is R one.
You're looking for something similar to what was in the last application, aren't you?
Well.
Here either.
But the only because the only place that I've seen that is where it's listed under Hamlet. So. So, all right, but notwithstanding, I think I would be comfortable setting a public hearing. Basically, to. Adjust the. For the variance regarding the. Lot size. Again, if we find out, you know, basically the reduced reduced lot provision does apply to. Again. A single family dwelling, then it would actually reduce the. Lot size to a fifteen thousand square feet, but I don't see it listed again in R one or in the Lake District. It's only listed in the Hamlet, so. So. All right, let me see. So if we were to proceed, then. If if somebody would be willing to. Declare ourselves lead agent in this matter.
I'll move that we declare ourselves lead agency in the. Area variance for Dennis Weekly, thirty five oh six dash two dash forty eight point one.
Okay, and I'll second that.
John.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Diane. Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, and then I will subsequently. Make a motion that the ZBA determine that this request for an area variance is an exempt. Type two action pursuant to Title Six NYCRR, section six seven one point five C twelve or thirteen. And that no further action pursuant to seeker is required.
Second that.
Nelson.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Matt. Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay. So the last thing we need, if somebody be willing to make a motion to set a public hearing for this matter. Which would be February sixteenth.
All right, I will move that we set a public hearing. For. Dennis Weekly, his address is eight forty five. Loudbury Roads, Schenectady, New York, one two three oh five. For. Lot size variances of three four thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. And thirty one thousand nine hundred and forty square feet respectively. On what's currently SBL thirty five point oh six dash two dash forty eight point one. Known as one seventy two and one fifty six Hillside Road, Pattersonville, New York. Hearing to take place. February sixteenth, seven P M.
Second.
John.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, Dennis, so you're all set. Again, we'll. Bring this matter up in the February meeting on February sixteen. And. Again, we'll conduct a public hearing and then hopefully be able to. Take it from there.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks.
So we'll be on the phone with you February sixteenth, then.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. All right.
So we're all set then, right?
Yeah, for the time being. The only thing, I guess you would had a conversation. With Joanne Crum about having a survey done.
Right.
Yeah, I I don't think it's necessary for our purposes, but you know. I mean, it's up to you. You you have a deed, right, that kind of spells out the, yeah, so. I I it's not necessary for our purposes that I see.
Okay, I'll stop it then.
Okay.
We'll probably talk to her tomorrow.
Yes, yeah. Great, thanks again.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Good night.
Okay. Michelle and John Sislow?
Yes.
We're here.
Great. Okay. If you want to kind of give us an idea of what you're looking to do.
Just adding, removing the existing garage. And we're going to do a bigger garage.
and we're gonna do a, uh, bigger garage with an attached, uh, mudroom to the house.
Okay, um. Okay, so the existing garage is the one that's actually labeled garage, this is on the, uh,
Correct.
survey map, that's gonna go, go away?
Yep.
Okay, um, and then kind of what you've colored in is gonna be the configuration of the new garage?
Correct.
Okay. So, if I look at this, and basically all you're in need of is a side yard variance?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. See if we got.
That it's gonna be about one foot closer to the neighbor's house than the existing garage?
Yeah, it's pretty close to about the edge of where the existing garage is, um, the, uh, from what I can tell.
Yeah, I, I'm just looking at the fourteen point five foot versus fifteen point nine.
Well, there was a little discrepancy on the, um, survey we had done, and they're working that out now, so it's, it's within a few inches.
Right, it looks like there's, is that the neighbor's shed that may cross the line?
Yes.
Okay. Do you currently occupy the house now?
Um, no, we live in Connecticut, this is, um, our second home, but we plan on retiring, that's why we're looking to build the, um, two-car garage.
Gotcha, okay, is anybody there now, living?
No.
No, we go up on weekends.
Okay, so it is habitable for the most part, but nobody's there year-round, say, or?
No, it's a brand-new house.
Yeah.
The house was rebuilt in two thousand and eight.
Oh, okay. Alright.
Then the garage is older than that, I presume?
Yeah, yeah, about a hundred years old, from what I can tell, the house was original to, or the garage was original to the house that was there. The original house burnt down in oh-seven on us, and we rebuilt in oh-eight.
And now are you connected to the sewer there, or no?
Yes.
Yeah.
You are. Alright. So, the, the lot line, is that now correct, uh, so that fourteen and a half foot is fairly accurate?
It should be more the, the fifteen foot is more accurate than the, uh, the fourteen foot.
Okay, so if we say it's fifteen, then you would be seeking a, uh, a twenty-five-foot variance?
Correct.
Okay. And the, the, basically the footprint of the garage is gonna be, uh, the, the size of the garage is gonna be approximately?
Uh, twenty-six by thirty, twenty-six wide, thirty deep.
Okay.
So it's more of like a one and a half car garage.
Thirty-deep meaning north-south alignment?
Correct, east-west twenty-six.
Mm-hmm. Gotcha.
And you say that, um, you're having the property line determined. Yeah, do you have any idea when you'll know that for certain?
I have not talked to the surveyor, um, since he gave us this map, uh, it was undisputed, and I really have not talked to him since then.
He just gave this to us in January.
Okay, yeah, I mean, this looks fairly recent, so.
Yeah, we did this all recently, um, the survey, uh, we actually have an architect that, uh, on hand right now, who is drawing up plans for us.
And this is gonna be attached to the house?
Correct, through a mudroom.
Yeah.
Right, does that make it a dwelling, and since it's an undersized lot, can we prorate the?
Um.
And once we attach it to the house, it becomes part of the dwelling, no?
You're right, especially if there's a mudroom. I mean, it's, it's in addition to the house, essentially.
Correct, that would be my position, and then.
Okay, so.
Right the setback.
Uh, yeah, let me see. So the, the lot width is about a hundred feet?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. A hundred by about a hundred and, I don't know, like ninety, hundred ninety-two and a half?
Yeah, the, the, all the lake, all the lots around the lake were pretty much a half acre.
Yeah, yeah. So, as it would stand, then, a minimum lot size is a hundred and seventy-five feet?
Mm-hmm.
So. Trying to get to my calculator.
Hopefully somebody had a calculator handy.
Uh, I, I did, I just, so a hundred divided by one seventy-five is point five seven one?
Okay.
Um.
Times forty feet.
Would, yeah. Let me do this again. So then, by right, you'd be, how much you get?
I got forty-nine. Uh, I did something wrong there, never mind.
It should be, I got, it's, so it's point five seven one times the forty, and you get twenty-two point eight four, so we'll say.
Right, so then they're only seeking like a eight-foot variance.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Good with that, Matt.
Okay. Um, uh, what we have the opportunity to do, because this is what we would call a pre-existing undersized lot, so now the lot sizes are, you know, l- larger, um, so we can prorate, like, the setback requirements. So, where, again, i- if it were, uh, what would be, um, a hundred and seventy foot, hundred and seventy-five foot wide lot, which is now the requirement, then we can prorate this down, um, because it's only a hundred feet, and then we prorate the setbacks, which had been forty, and then really, for this lot, the, uh, side setbacks would be twenty-three feet, if that makes sense?
Yes.
Okay, so, then, given, um, you're gonna be, uh.
Roughly fifteen feet off the side yard, you only need an eight-foot variance.
Yes.
If it's, um, if it's fourteen point five, you, you come out with eight feet, four inches.
Okay, well, yeah, we were.
That's the minimum number.
Yeah, well, we could stick with the fifteen, and then, again, uh, use that, uh, against the twenty-three, and then the eight-foot variance would be, all that would be necessary.
Well, we'll use the fifteen to set the hearing, and hopefully next month, we'll have a exact number when we, when we move to grant or deny.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Not seeing anything else. I, it, any other questions, board members, that? Have you followed what we did here?
Yep.
Diane, Link, does this make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. So then. So, again, at this point, all we're looking and would be in need of, uh, is an eight-foot variance request. So the next step, then, uh, if somebody would, uh, make a motion to declare the zoning, uh, board, uh, the lead agent?
I will move to declare the zoning board lead agent for the side yard variance of John and Michelle Sizlo uh, at three thirty-seven South Shore Road, thirty-five oh nine dash one dash twenty.
It's not South Shore, it's Shore Road.
It's Shore, sorry.
I just wanna make sure it's proper for the paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Right, correction, three thirty-seven Shore Road, thirty-five oh nine dash one dash twenty for the purposes of secret review.
Second.
Stating quite Environmental Quality Review Act.
John.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Um, and as a result, uh, I'll make a motion that the, uh, ZBA, uh, will determine, uh, that this request for an individual setback, uh, and lot line variance is a type-two, uh, action pursuant to Title VI NYCRR Section 671.5C 12 or 13, and that no further action pursuant to seeker is required.
Second.
Nelson.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay, um, and then if somebody would be so kind to set a public hearing for this matter, again, it would be, uh.
Sixteen, I will move that we set a public hearing on the, for side yard variance for John and Michelle Sizlo of nineteen Mapleby Road, Wallerford, Connecticut, oh-six four-four-two, for their property at three thirty-seven Shore Road, Pattersonville, New York, one-two-one-three-seven, that's thirty-five oh nine dash one dash twenty. Such hearing to take place seven PM, February sixteenth.
I'll second.
John.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Okay. Alright, so you folks are all set for the time being?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yeah, I, are you fairly new to the area?
No, we bought the place in oh-three.
Okay, so, and you're familiar with the comprehensive plan?
No.
Okay, well, that, it's basically, um, it, it's kind of a statement of the town's goals, um, of which, you know, how a lot of the zoning ordinance are created, um, and it's currently, uh, in review, which is done every so often, if you go to the town's website, there's a draft of the comprehensive plan, um, and I know the planning board, uh, Thursday of this, uh, week, there's gonna be a public hearing regarding the plan itself, you also have the opportunity till the end of the month to submit questions or comments based on the, you know, proposed changes to the comprehensive plan, so, um, and you can submit those to Melissa, you know, via email, it's, it's, it's kind of worth a look at, it does run down, you know, a lot of history of the town, um, and then again, some of the, uh, ideas that, you know, people are, you know, citing as goals for the town, how they would like to see it develop in the future, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I think, worthwhile information, so, other than that, again, we'll see you in February.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
Alright, thanks. Okay, right. Um. So it's just back to us now, right?
Yeah, I have to plug in real quick, otherwise we're gonna die.
Okay, um, just real quick, again, um, there's, uh, and I wrote this down, um, if you go to, there's like a Schenectady, um, tax map site, um, so you can actually do some, uh, information, or, or do some, uh, research for information on these properties. Oh, do we just done? Oh, back to me, sorry, um, so, I just, I'll send that out a, a couple links, because it, you can actually get a history of like a parcel or a property, you know, um, which can be useful. So, and you just need basically that SBL number, and that will get you in the ballpark. It's, it's really no different than the tax maps that are printed and downstairs at the town hall.
You're, you're referring to, uh, Image Mate Online?
That, that's one of them, right, but that's.
I like the GIS function on that one.
Exactly, um, you know, I mean, you could do research on your own property too, which, you know, you could see kind of the, uh, you know, the succession of owners, you know, prior to you, kind of thing, it's just, it's good information, and again, it, it's been beneficial at times when, uh, we've not had access to the tax maps downstairs, so. Other than that, there was a, uh, and I don't know if I'd sent this out, I'll, I'll try to be brief here, there's a list of type-two actions. Are, are you familiar with the, you know, the types of actions that constitute type-twos?
I've seen the list.
Okay, well.
Those of us. Those of us who are around long enough, we did a, a continuing ad on this a couple of years ago.
Right, and again, I just was made aware of it again, kind of based on our recent training, so. But so in, in any event, maybe I'll send that, would just, you know. So the only last thing and I, I just thought of this more recently than not, is that in the notes or the minutes, oh yeah, we have to go over the minutes, right? All right, well, let's do that quickly, and then I'll have one more piece to add, and we can wrap this up.
So in the minutes, we'll need to change the S B L number for Kevin Novak.
Okay, yeah.
It's the one point one three number.
Yeah, it was
It was.
Six point one 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 was the corrected number.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the reasons I asked, because when I went to that, you know, image site, they still had kind of the older tax number, that one three, so, and that's why, kind of why I brought that up.
I know, on, on that site, you can also look things up by name or address as well.
Yes, yeah. So, what did I do with those?
The application by Joy Joy Black withdrawn?
No.
No.
We asked for additional information, and I guess she wasn't able to get around to it, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, she'll be back in February.
Yeah, which is fine. I mean, it's not like we had set a public hearing, but the only question I had, if you, I, I was wondering how she got that information as the need for, you know, the sixty-two foot, you know, variance. Because I know we had a, I mean, if she did this like from a G P S map, those are not accurate. And we'd asked about a copy of her property deed, because a lot of times they'll make reference to the pins that basically mark your property. I know we had an application at one time where somebody had done that, and then we ended up doing a visit, and then decided that he wasn't in need of a variance, because again, you can't be precise enough, you know, from a G P S map, even when they overlay the, you know, lot lines, kind of.
Right.
So. And I hadn't thought to bring that up last time, but like I say, if you, we asked that she provide a copy of the deed, because it would and should make reference to pin settings that might be more beneficial as trying to figure out what the actual variance, you know, dimensions are. Did anybody look at the minutes? I don't, I have.
Yeah, I've been looking at them here. Other than the S B L number, I haven't noticed anything incorrect.
Right, um.
Was Dale attending at the last meeting?
Dale was.
He was?
Hmm.
Oh.
Yeah, he was sitting right next to me.
Oh.
He was just off camera.
Oh. Well, weren't you, were you at the town hall last time?
Yeah, I am this time too.
Oh, okay. I thought you were at home, but that's all right.
I have two young kids. So I think the dogs bargain was bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I, I guess I'll go out on a limb and propose we accept the meetings without correction unless somebody proves me wrong.
With the minor correction that was.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
On Novak.
Was that you seconding it, John?
With the one, with the one minor correction to.
Nelson.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Diane.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
John, or Link.
Hi.
Approved.
Um, the only last thing I wanted to do was just for something to go into the minutes ex, to express our grati- gratitude and appreciation to Pat Paste for his service on the zoning board. You know, it's kind of a shame, given the current conditions, we couldn't really do this in person, but you know, I, I think it's, it's definitely worth a mention. I mean, he predates his, you know, being on the board long before me, so he's been, you know, with the board and on the board for quite some time, and I, I think it is well warranted that we recognize that, so.
Yeah, here, here.
Okay. Other than that, thanks. And somebody can make a motion that we can put this to bed?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Link, you could second it.
Yeah, I might as well second.
I'm like, everyone's being quiet. Do you really want to sit on here longer?
I know, well, hopefully we won't have these as lengthy as they've been, but, so, good to see you, Link. Glad you're still with us.
Link.
Hi.
Nelson.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
All right.
All righty, thanks.
Can I just have everybody return their binders?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Also, so you all know, I will not be here for the next meeting in February.
Okay.
Okay.
Making note of that.
Please make a note of that.
Yes.
You still want me to send you things?
Who, me?
Yeah, like the agenda and everything, or no?
I'm sure why not.
Yeah, you should, because if you're.
To do with the next March one.
Exactly, there may be a need for you in the subsequent meeting, so.
I'm forgetting to mention this, and I don't know Nelson or Melissa, but I don't have a sheet, like the cheat sheet for setting a motion for a public hearing.
That's a good point, and I, I just started coming up with one, because again, I'll, I'll come up with something, and then we'll look at it, and, you know, Jonathan, I'll send it to you, because you do it more often than not. If you're okay with it, then that's what we'll, you know, continue with. Yeah, I mean, that would be good, because it, again, I don't always remember it off the top of my head. I do, for some things I do, but not for that in particular, but, yeah, we could make sure that that's made available.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was just me, so.
No, I, because, well, one of the.
There used to be one.
I was gonna say, they were in all the binders, but.
Yeah, there used to be one in the binder. Now I just sort of do it from vague memory.
Okay, yeah, they're definitely in the planning board, so I can get them in there.
Well, we have one, but it's mislabeled. It, it, it says for public hearing motion, you know, and then it goes on to mention, you know, home occupation business permit. So, we really do need something that, right, that is a better guide for, you know, setting a public hearing.
Yeah, that sounds fun. I can do that.
All right, I'll be in towards the end of the week, because I have all these finding sheets that we accomplished tonight, and we'll be good to go then.
Okay, I would come on, don't come on Thursday.
I'll come Friday if you're there.
Perfect, yeah, I just have my planning board meeting and the comprehensive plan, so I'm just getting ready for that.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, great, thanks.
Sounds good, thanks.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Bye.